November, I don't know what it is either. It's December something. December 4th, 2014, National Park Board, blah, blah, blah. Take me to the ready to man sit down there, ten in motion, kids.
You're not in school anymore. That explains a lot.
What?
Go back.
Oh, yeah?
A lot of times I feel like I'm in grade school. And chip?
I'll move away except for this. Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any changes or corrections? All's in favor of I? All's opposed, an A? That is good. Thank you. And, da, 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 let's see here. New business, zip. All business review proposed research protection amendments. Now, Kenny was gonna try and come up with some examples or some areas that are impacted by this. Was that the storage unit here?
Yeah, first, if I could just go over the fee schedule with you.
Oh, sir! New business.
I didn't have on the agenda, but...
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
We just left it in there, so we have enough more.
Fee schedule.
Currently, it's $100 for a site plan review or conditional use. Looking at the time that goes into it, $200, it's been $100 for a long, long time. The other thing we're adding, so we'd be doubling those fees. The other thing is adding $10 per notification every time we send somebody a letter under butter or in the conditional uses, it's everybody within a 500-foot radius. Looking at $10 per notification and then $60 when we do a legal notice in the paper. So that'll cover all the fees and still give you a couple hundred bucks to talk to a lawyer or something without getting into your own money.
So, a conditional use permit, the proposed fee now is $200?
Uh, the proposed fee.
Yes. Plus, $10 for every butter that gets notified?
Yep.
Now, see, I thought probably the... I thought probably it was $200, so the $100 was...
Would use that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lawyers, $150, $175 an hour, so if we consult with one for an hour, that's gonna suck that up and not leave you any of that a butter notification. When we do those, the conditional use site plan, they're 500-foot radius, so they're just not your four or butters. So when we're looking at that 500 foot, we can do 10, 15, 20 pretty easily. So, and these are, I suggest that these are, you guys, if you guys didn't agree, we could change that before we go with the notifying the selectmen and moving forward with those.
And there's $60 for the, is that what it costs to throw it in the paper, roughly?
General review, I believe.
Oh, you put it in that?
Well, the smart show.
I think it's the smart show.
I just want to do general review if the time allows.
Yeah, if we're short.
But if I can get into the smart show, it's a check.
Oh, yeah, it is. Plus, everybody gets it.
How long have we been dipping into our own money with the existing fees?
Every time we do one.
Every year. That's why he's working on the town hall, 'cause he doesn't get paid enough as CEO. It gets used for everything else.
Ken, this is kind of related, kind of long, but I'll ask it anyway. Would you ever support the notion of a raising of funds on an annual basis into a land bank to, so the town could add on to, say, Mary Grant or Town Forest?
Um, we have those over in Wakefield where a certain percentage of, when you take a property out of current use, it goes into that, I think it's 10% or 15% goes of that sale goes into 100% of that goes in, it generates a lot of money fast.
Does it work?
Oh, yeah.
Does it make the town...
Well, we're looking at, there's a certain amount of land that we all agree, we all have a different opinion on how much percent of town should be preserved, so everyone has a different opinion. We've got a lot of it over there now that my opinion is we should start looking at water quality with that money. Protecting the lakes, we give 50,000 to 60,000 to the lake associations for water quality. We could take that money and bring it right over, we're not using tax money. So, yeah, there should be a mechanism in there for water quality or conservation.
Just want to get your sense on that. Thanks.
So basically, on your fees, my suggestion would be going from 100 with a conditional use and the site plan to 200 and then making sure the butters and the legal notices are also covered.
Sounds good to me. Like I said, they've been, I know conditional use has been $100 for years.
Years, yeah. Yeah, I think it's 50.
And specifically, now that it's 500 feet of the property line, there's sometimes it can be a whole lot of...
Yep.
And it getting any cheaper, I get that. Does anyone have an issue with this? Apparently, everybody's on board, Ken.
And on the subdivision side, I think with the 200, the subdivision and 100 for law, we just want to be 200, so everything's 200. Conditional use, site plan appeals board, subdivision laws, it's all the same thing.
That's easier than work. Sounds good.
All right, moving forward with the selection on that. The other thing we were talking about tonight was the resource protection and proposal to look at allowing through a conditional use permit, which the fees just possibly changed for, and allowing single-family and residential accessory buildings in those areas. We were looking at, so with the conditional use, you'd have to come through the planning board for the regulations or the conditions to build on it. This one here is off Vetro. This is right before you get into...
Yeah, it's my house, wait a minute. I was legal.
1970, you were at one time, now you have. Further, I can know, 1970...
I am a grandfather.
There you go. So... All soil. So this particular camp here, this is up off the H Road, he's built out here, this general area, he is from the river, he's about 515 feet. You can see the soils that are poor right there. They've been mapped for forested wetland, basically hybrid soil.
That's behind his place?
Yep.
Okay, that green swath there?
That's gonna be the poor soils, that's National Wetland Inventory Mapping. And when you put the buffer, buffer zone onto it, you can see his houses up here, so this whole lot, which is, I think it's approximately five acres, when you get down to it, I think about 8,000 square feet there that he can do something. And probably, once I took the setback from the road and wheezed them out, he's got a little tiny area that he could possibly garage or something like that. He does have the dwelling there already, but he just is prohibited from doing anything else. So again, if he's already in there, if he wanted to do something else, conditional use for the planning board, you guys could have him do watershed surveys, detention ponds, whatever you felt necessary for mitigating any possible stormwater issues which, 500, 600 feet away on this one here.
What is that flowage, Ken?
That's coming out of the swamps up by Moose Pond that go down into Grady's Lake by Anderson Cove Road. Remember we did the subdivision on Anderson Cove Road as you're going in? That's that swamp on the right, it goes under the road, turns into a small stream and downstream from that.
And Mr. Melkey's lot is again where?
That's that number six. So, the other three lots next to him, there's a buffer there, but it's following the lake, it's getting closer to the lake, it's allowing them a big area up there. So in that ordinance, the first thing it says is there's no other place to build on your lot out of the resource protection. You physically need to, and some of the lots, you'd have to drive through the resource protection, do more damage to build out of the resource protection versus actually just building in that general area. So it would give you guys the time to look at it and say, yeah, you've got no hope of doing anything else on the parcel.
And they would still have to have a viable septic system or septic design? If they couldn't get one of those, they couldn't do anything?
No, no. So this one here is on Hopper Road, this is the post office here, you're coming down the same page, you turn right onto, left onto Hopper Road. This parcel right here, 18-1. This was not resource protection a couple of years ago, it is now all resource protection. Again, poor soils, forested wetlands, it's not a state resource protection, it's just town resource protection. This looks like it's about a five-acre lot.
Is that the one that has a gated drive that goes back?
No, it's a little bit before.
Fire road or something?
You could see, it's just, it's right after the first house on Hopper Road, it's right directly after.
Okay, okay.
So this is a five-acre lot. Only place out of the resource protection is this area right here. And once you take your 75-foot setback from the road, he's looking at a third of an acre, so probably quarter of an acre is basically all his building area. So that's another one that if you physically couldn't build in that area or wasn't feasible, he could come through you guys and you could say, no, build in that area, we feel you've got plenty of room in your third of an acre and build there. Or you're gonna be into the buffer, we want you to do this, this and that, have stormwater mitigated, detention, mats put in, rain gardens, engineered studies, you could throw anything at it. So once we brought in the resource protection... We've got about 75 linear miles on the resource protection, a couple thousand acres of it, 120 total. So when you're comparing it to the lakes, it's two-thirds more than the mileage in the lakes, so the resource protection is significant up there. My concern is where the issues are coming up, that if people are having more and more difficulty building on lots that were buildable a couple of years ago, you could be having a petition that goes back to, A, eliminate the resource protection we have in town, the local stuff that isn't state guideline, and the state guidelines have reduced up too. There's a lot of the criteria for resource protection that's been removed, a couple of different things. So keeping that out of the next from happening would be a good thing too, I think. Fox's Ridge.
So our options are pretty much...
The proposal that we had drafted up, which allows single-family and their accessory buildings in the resource protection through conditional use through planning boards, so you guys would have as much teeth as you want in that development, construction, versus the backlash of having the local resource protection removed and possibly the state guidelines have been released too, dropped down too. One of the other problem areas we have is Saunders Lane, we did that subdivision six, seven years ago off of Fox's Ridge.
By the Sharp Curve?
Oh, towards Lubbock.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So as you're pulling in Saunders Lane, and it was never the greatest land out back there, but we've got, this house is in it, this house is in it, this house is in it, so all these houses are now all resource protection. As they try to do some farming or something like that, trying to build chicken coops and stuff, it's not working, basically, it's all, no, you can't do anything out there.
They come here for chicken coops?
Well, some of the chicken coops...
Who are these honest people?
Well, somebody calls that there's a chicken coop in it.
Oh, somebody knocks them out?
Yeah. Bonds, any of that stuff. Then again, if you're looking at farming, the runoff from farming, it would be significant and it'd be something you'd wanna take a look at. For this particular area here, from these houses to actually physically being in water, you're probably 300, 400, 500 feet, but you could go a couple hundred feet and find some small pools of standing water. It's nothing you'd wanna build on back there, but when they've lost, it's the buffer zone that they're really into that...
We knew that at the time, that there was some kind of pocket of wetland back in there. But the lots, for the most part, were up towards the front and, you know, it was decent land, but you're right, the buffers did eat in that pretty significantly.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if we do the topo map, the topo map was picking up that there was less desirable land, forested wetlands. It's quite a way to actually get into the wetlands that are back there, you can tell by the tree growth and stuff.
Kenny, just a quick question and clarification. On item B, it reads the lot on which the structure is proposed is undeveloped. So would that wording have to be changed for Mr. Melkey?
I would say, yeah. But a lot of it is that none of the lots are created after the resource protection was developed. These lots all existed prior to. Do you think we should probably have some sort of date for that to do this? I was going with the date of the order, yeah.
September 21st, 2000.
Was that when... That's when he came in.
When the match became valid, yeah. September 29th, 2000.
He's in lot 20 here, where there's so much resource protection, but he's probably high and dry right there, that's the best part of all the land out there. So his options, by the time he was, we were talking to him in our office and found a reasonable alternative, it'd be like the best possible location, if you can get out beyond the 100-foot zone, you don't go to the planning board, you relocate what you've got.
But the 100-foot includes just the green or the brown too, the outfit too, right?
Um, the 100-foot would be shoreline setback, this is 250 feet.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And there was some RP back up in here, where it came up, where there's actually the 10 acres of water. But locally, we look at the forested wetland, which really significantly opened it up. And this, since we got the 1,500 square feet is the size of the, you know, the shacks and the buildings, what if they already have a building there and they're looking to put an accessory structure? I would say 600 square feet max on the accessory. So you'd add another number for that.
Why 600?
That's what triggers foundations. So if we were maxed at 600 to 599, less than 600, they wouldn't need frost protection, they could do slabs and stuff like that. And that would get you a smaller garage or...
Chicken coop.
Chicken coop, multi-story chicken coop.
With stoves.
With a pot, with a pot.
Way out.
We lost our ventilation.
Yeah, yeah. Solar off the grid.
Sound deadening for roosters, 'cause that's what kills them, is the roosters. People hear the roosters, and they're bitch.
One of the other areas, and I mean, the areas are just scattered all over the town, Acton Elementary School going towards Milton, Acton Fairgrounds would be...
Who's got that old farmhouse there?
Not at this meeting. So you've got that existing farmhouse on, again, it's probably about a five-acre lot, and put the shoreline zone over it, so he's very limited on what he can do there, leaves him a little spot over here. You've got the brand-new house next to it, all resource protection back in that area with... I think about 1,600, 1,700 square feet minus the road setback and the side setback, so about 1,500 square feet on that particular lot that he can do something. And that's a new house in there.
But you could do it on a case-by-case basis?
It would all be, that's a 20-acre lot, he's limited down to, let me see, 15,000 square feet. It would all be conditional use. And basically, that means they have no alternative to do anything else. This guy here, probably if he was trying to do something, he'd have it up in this area here, there's probably enough room for him to do something there. This is going across the street into Loop Road there, all this land, all resource protection now. And most of them do have, hey, I have some there. Oh, that one's vacant. That one does have a house on it.
Yeah, I didn't think there was too much open along the...
The first one is.
Very sad wound there.
That one's not one. So that's all basically resource protection in through there, they would be limited on it. But if we went across the street, there's a resource protection there, the buffer's still going across, so if you're trying to do something out back, you'd have to go through the buffer to get to it and to force them to go out back, maybe it's just as well that they built right there. Or that would be up to you guys for conditional use, to look at it case by case. Do you allow them to go through the buffer and build out back, 'cause they have room too, or is it less disturbing just to do something out front?
It might, yeah, may depend with the buffers, like, you may not...
All cut or it's a lawn?
Does this new ordinance allow us to make that decision? Do you look at A?
Well, A kinda says, what do you think A, what's A saying to you?
Well, it says no location on the property other than within the resource protection district where the structure can be built.
Right. Is can the best, I mean, would you put should be built or some of the words like can?
Well, can makes it just that much more restrictive. It's very restrictive now. This would make it a little less restrictive, but still towards the restrictive end of less restrictive. You with me?
Yes. Yeah, 1 to 10 restrictiveness, I don't know.
Yes, probably, but...
And I suppose you'd also be looking at the resource that you're protecting, is it a forested wetland that's not protected by the state, it's just a locally protected area? You may be more willing to allow the driveway to go through or something like that, versus it's truly a 20-acre wetland down there and it is also protected by the state, it's very bitch. You may be more stringent on that.
Well, I guess, I don't know, I mean, are we just gonna be looking at places that haven't been developed yet at all? Or are we gonna include places like we've been looking at that may have a house, but there's no place to do anything else? Or if they could put up a barn, they have to put it, you know, 500 feet away, you know? Which is maybe not feasible for them. And I don't know, this appears to be written just dealing with undeveloped properties so far.
Yeah.
And... Maybe we wanna live it that way, or maybe we wanna include ones that have something on them that, you know, may want, you know, an accessory building.
It's interesting to note that this was lifted directly from this...
State guidelines.
Template that we were using when we drafted.
Except for the word accessory buildings, I put that in. So you may, you know, maybe up for you guys to take it out.
But in the intent, when the legislature and the DEP drafted this thing up, was that the RP district, they had no conception of what we would do. Their conception of RP district was a 10-acre wetland.
Correct.
There may be some sensibility to tampering this a little bit, but it would be interesting to keep that in mind while we're reading through this language, that, two things. One is the intent of the state and their definitions of RP. The other one is, what was the original intent of what we created with this map tool?
I don't know, we've got one in here.
Yeah, this map here, the one that shows the box. If we can strike a balance between what we were trying to protect there in terms of all water resources that are grounded and surface water, and the sustainability of those things, and strike some kind of a middle course, maybe it's worth looking at. But I would wish that the board keeps in mind, you know, the original intent of what is on books now, just so we don't lose sight of why. And it comes down to an economic issue in my mind sometimes, given the fact that 75% of our tax base comes from the lakes, and the lakes are fed by streams and boats and swamps and etc. This is the, this is the, by adopting this, you are diminishing your safeguards a little bit, I think that's fair to say, in terms of potential ability of the town to maintain, you know, good water quality. If we, maybe the balance needs to be adjusted a little bit here, I'm willing to consider that, but there's some language here, like the first notion that pops up is the notion of undeveloped lots versus developed lots. It's instructive also that the, not to undercut this, but there was ample time. Kenny, you helped us mail up those damn things twice, I think. There were public hearings, you know, two years previous to the adoption of this thing. So it wasn't like we pulled this out of the night and adopted it the next day.
And it's the first thing I tell most of them when they're shocked to find out their resource protection. You got something in the mail.
Yeah, I think they got...
The guy that lives down the exit of the school, he doesn't remember it. But I'm sure he was at the meetings and voted supporting. I mean, everybody who wants to support the water quality. And when you...
Well, not everybody.
Yeah.
Separation.
Kenny, give me a thought to how this might impact... Well, it would only impact as I read through it. Paper subdivisions, right? Subdivisions with no loose lot or the lots that are on, are, I'm not built upon. We're going to put on option A as written, undeveloped paper subdivision law. Am I right? I mean, what, does it impact?
Well, there's other lots too that have been impacted because they were made years ago for whatever reason.
Oh, they were made, right. I'm just saying.
It's not just subdivision lots.
Right. But subdivision lots would be included in this in the definition of a single-family residential structure. We can't exclude subdivisions from this. So I just want, maybe worthwhile looking at.
But a new subdivision that came in, yeah, you exclude them.
Yeah, right.
They wouldn't be able to use the square footage for lot size. They wouldn't be able to develop.
Well, yeah, it would just be, you know, existing ones, like the one down there on Fox's Ridge. What more just look at?
How would this impact, and maybe we don't have to answer this tonight, but that whole notion of the net residential acreage, that kind of gets, doesn't quite stick to the ball anymore. The proviso...
That's only in the critical rural?
I thought that was anywhere.
Maybe a subdivision application, but it's only in critical rural as far as development.
So you could have a lot in rural that would be, say, a three-acre lot that was two acres of RP and one acre of buildable land and they could build in it?
If it's an existing lot, yeah, yeah. The maximum lot coverage is only twenty percent, not vegetated, no matter where you are on it. There's another lot right here on Goose Pond Road as you're going down before you get to West Shore Drive here. All forested wetlands. This is the one you and me walked on, Tom, a few years ago. New dwelling there.
Isn't that amazing?
Yeah, I have to go up too much to get the house though. Yeah, so the houses are all up on the road. The houses are just right on that area. Yeah, so there's this house, this barn, this barn. All that resource protection, that buffer goes across the street, comes back down. Half an acre or so by the time you get rid of the street setbacks.
On a fourteen-acre lot. I think that's what it's...
No, it's the lot number.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's a fairly good-sized lot though. Thirteen point nine.
Oh, shit, I'm sorry!
Yeah, you gotta get him to him. He's right. So, but I think you'd be looking at significant if it was resource protection from the state as far as it's truly wetlands. It is greater than ten acres. To me, that would be more significant than two, three acres of hydroxoy with the buffer that you're into. It would be case by case, individually looking at each one and throwing all the protection safeguards in that you guys felt was adequate.
Would that lot also fit into that situation where the back section, which might even be bigger, of number fourteen there, that you go across that or...
Yeah.
Yeah, and try to through all of it.
That's what I mean. That's possible that they could come forward with that.
As a proposal, but I would assume the planning board would say, no, you've got your farm. You're in the buffer out front. There's no reason to go back. But no.
And then you're, you're not even going through RP. You're also going through the shoreline. Where the hell is this?
That's just poor soils.
Oh, is that all that is?
Yep.
I probably don't have all houses in the poor soils.
I got my...
You who?
I got my feet right that day. Kenny was scared of the swamp.
Was that fall or spring there out there? Do you remember?
It was a hot humid day.
Yeah, Augustish or so there?
Yeah.
So National Wetland Inventory maps some poor soils out there. Southern Maine Regional took it, figured out how much it is. And a lot of this calculation to determine how big it is, they've pulled it in from the abutting lot. So it's not just his lot that's going to determine the size of the buffer. So you've got to grab the lot, the size of the hydroxoy or poor soil from over here and up there to determine how big of the buffer zone is in that area. So that, I would imagine, is greater than ten acres of poor soil. So that's a two fifty buffer all the way around it. And maybe some of the verbiage would be, I hate, it's in the ordinance in several locations, for resource protection in the shoreline zone and resource protection out of the shoreline zone. Maybe we'd want two separate guidelines. If you're outside of the shoreline zone, there's resource protection, the local adopted buffer, then we can look at accessory buildings and this and that. If you're inside of it and it's an undeveloped lot that you can't do anything with, then maybe that's allowed.
Yes. I was going to say yes.
That's another thing. That's where I thought it was wrong. Well, yeah, if it's estate, you know, zone, then there would be, yes, so there would be.
The state has the verbiage that if you're in the resource protection, conditional use could apply.
That's right.
Because they didn't want total take.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So outside of the shoreline zone, the town can do whatever they want. Inside that shoreline zone, RP, the guidelines or the drafted ordinance would need to be approved by the DEP. So once we had something close, I'd run it by the DEP, see if they felt confident. So if we broke it up to inside and outside, outside of the shoreline zone, we do whatever we want. Because they don't care.
It is maybe important in this discussion to just point out that we do have the right. I'll look at a page eighty-three, six, six, three. Planning board, it's here by Arthur Asriaga, and the board shall approve with modifications or conditions or disapprove the application for conditional use permit. So there's kind of a layman's sense sometimes that the conditional use permit, once you've started that process, you have permission, but you're eligible to operate under conditions. But we do indeed have the ability to disapprove the thing.
For sure. I think what, I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've ever disapproved one. I don't think we've let it get that far. I mean, I think we stopped the process when we realized that there's nothing they were going to be able to do.
The rest is wasting their time.
Yeah, and wasting our time. I know we've done that in the past. As far as somebody starting the process, and it looks like it may be legitimate. I don't recall that we've denied any conditional uses when we thought that it was going to work. I don't know. But obviously, we do have the option to do it if that's what we need to do. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The swamp. Well, how do the, how do the rest of you feel about this? Does anyone feel that we should think about making a change or leave it the way it is?
I think it's worth it.
Kenny's bringing it to us for a reading.
Well, we've been approached by a selectman last year and then they pulled it back because it was, for what, it was poorly written for whatever reason. And we were in the midst of maybe doing something else. And they brought it up again this year, simply because they've had people approaching code enforcement, wanting the bill, and now realizing that, you know, I've been paying the taxes for X amount of years and we were going to build a house here and, you know, it's, they don't consider it a wetland. And all of a sudden, you tell me I can't do anything on my land now. Well, you got something in the mail. Oh, no, I didn't.
So the first thing they do is a bait, a tax bait.
Ah, yes. And the selectmen don't like that.
So that's what that is. This is the other piece right on Goose Pond Road right across from the other one we were just looking at. We've got the house with the... Yeah, they've got the pond down there and the barn and such and so on. So there's the barn, there's the house. And there's your wetland back there or your poor soils back there. It brings that whole, basically almost all the lot except a little bit up there.
So the house just misses it, right? Is that the house that was square where the eye was? Protects a some blemish?
That's the house right there.
Oh, there's the house. Okay.
That's the barn there. So, I mean, that would be something the board would have to consider if he's trying to do something to his barn down there. Are you going to tell him, no, there's room to build outside of the resource protection? Or...
Geez, he's almost in the shoreline.
Or build in there, but you're going to put drip line trenches, infiltration mats down. Your county water source is going to design yourself, you know, maintain it or water garden. Or you just tell them, you've got room to do something out there. Cut these trees down, butcher up animals up there. So again, it would be case by case.
Kenny, since this has been, the map tool has been in effect. I mean, are we opening up a can of worms here? Are we going to be doing safe location permits relative to this all twice a week? I mean, do you see many examples of this out there?
The accessory buildings, yeah, you can run into more than that. Undeveloped lots, couple a year, an undeveloped lot that he can't do anything on.
I would propose that if we were going to consider it, my suggestion would be that we stick with the state language. It's always a safe bet to hand me that one. And pertaining to item B there, a lot of which the structure is proposed is undeveloped. I think that that kind of meets what Acton's intent was halfway anyway, in my sensibilities. It is important to remember that the, and I checked with a lawyer, a friend of ours that is a member of the Land Trust this morning. And I asked her the question, does the provision of the land use of an individual private campsite contingent upon CEO review of its sanitary facilities on an otherwise unbuildable lot through the RP constitute a legally defensible safeguard against the charge of takings? Which is what we've kind of had in the past. And she said, as far as she knew, that sensibility is still defensible and still... She has not seen a solid, whatever you call, a case against that, you know, proviso that stood up. So we're on pretty firm ground where we are. I can understand the grievances that are coming before Kenny. But I think maybe we should, we should look at this carefully if we're going to consider it and maybe strike a balance between the need that is expressed by landowners and the protection that we ought to provide to the resource protection. The one thing I would hit on first of all is that, or I'd like to hear some notions on is this notion of limiting it to undeveloped lots.
You can't, if it's undeveloped, then accessory structures don't apply in any way.
Right.
Exactly.
Well, that, right, right. I mean, if there was, you mean if there was any, if there's no structure on the lot, maybe else would be considered.
Can't have an accessory structure if there's no primary.
Right. And to be undeveloped, there's nothing left, correct?
Could you build it all at the same time?
You could have an accessory.
Primary and accessory?
Yeah, as long as it's within this fifty, around fifteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen, that you can do, but it would have to be at the same time. If we leave be the way it is and somebody has a house, they could not build a barn unless it was going to be in property that wasn't in the new RP.
It'll be maxed out at fifteen hundred anyways, even if they navigate it.
Right. But still, it would preclude anybody, you know, doing anything additional if they already have. If they have some...
So what if you lined out and be, the lot on which the structure is proposed was established? So it is undeveloped and out of there. That would keep it so that it had to be established prior to... I would not propose...
So the lot on which the structure is proposed was established and recorded in your county, blah, 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 blah.
So you're not, your sense there is that with that verbiage, you don't need the clause is undeveloped? What's your sense?
Right, right. And you could, you know, that would allow for the woodshed or the chicken coop or whatever.
It would allow, it would allow for accessory buildings on a site that already has a building on it.
But you will still have to go through the process and will still have to demonstrate that there's no better location.
And we can always say that, yes, there is. This chicken coop can be fifty feet away from the house, not five, which will put you in RP or whatever.
I mean, I think such as chicken coops are going to be looked at a bit differently than a woodshed, just because of the potential for runoff and some scale of the...
The fifteen hundred square feet is thirty-eight by fifty. Thirty by, excuse me, thirty by...
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight foot square, yeah. So it's, it's an ample area. So you're saying...
I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, that if you took, you know, is undeveloped and out of that sentence.
Yeah. So the illusion might allow some of the flexibility a little.
The primary concern is that it was established prior to...
Zone change.
Well, I guess I still would have, my choice would be to leave that language in there. The other one I would hope we could discuss more in depth is C one. Whereas we're trying to protect the resource protection with the least expensive means possible by maintenance of a vegetable buffer to allow buildings to be built on a eighteen, nineteen percent slope, you know, anything less than twenty percent. That, to me, is kind of inviting problems where you already have a solution with the absence of development there. But I guess what I would go for is, what I would suggest would be considered would be a lessening of that slope, maybe in half.
Twenty percent is pretty low.
Ten percent is not much of a slope. I mean, you've got driveways because the section's deeper than that.
Twenty percent sounds like a big slope, but that's twenty feet and a hundred, which is ten feet and fifty, which is five feet and twenty-five. So twenty-five feet, you're only gaining five feet.
How long is this road?
Maybe closer than twenty-five. Maybe closer than 25.
They're just gaining 5 feet.
So halfway up the door, the doorway. Actually, a little bit more than halfway up the door.
Just thinking of water going down that slope, it's pretty, pretty bad.
Well, if it was on asphalt.
Yeah.
If it's on ground, if it's on, if it's rolling off a roof that then rolls into a drip trench or something.
My driveway.
And it's all.
No, no, we're getting a patting surface there.
And see, that's what we could do. We could throw in all kinds of mitigation.
Yeah, it gets to be a little like a death by a thousand cuts.
Well, but we're giving them the opportunity. They can't say that we took their land away and we said, wait a minute now, come to us, let's sit down, we'll work something out. And if you don't like it, then we're sorry, but this is the best we could do. And, you know, then we're fine.
Where did the 20% come from?
State privilege.
It isn't, I mean, all the new ordinance and everything that we've been working on, is it the 15, is the cutback between the two? Everything that we discuss, less than 50%, greater than 50%?
Oh, you mean in the, in the new stormwater deal?
I think there's a 10 trigger, 10% trigger I thought was one. 15 and 20.
But I thought we had, I thought 20 was in here as part of this new thing too somewhere. Maybe it's in the definition. In the stormwater. Was, we don't allow anything, anything built on greater than 15?
It defines the...
It defines the area that you're allowed to disrupt.
Oh, oh, it, it, okay. If it's less than 15, you can do this. If it's greater than 15, you gotta do something different. All right, so we allow for something on slopes greater than 15, but then less than?
Yeah, we just add more, we just pile on more requirements.
Yeah, more mitigation, yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's not a, it's not.
That's the trigger between stormwater plan and an LIV.
Right, yeah, gotcha.
The, uh, most of the wetlands, swamps and stuff like that, it's a flat area anyways. You don't have the steep and gray speed get to the end, which is really where you're trying to push them anyways, is out of that protected area, but...
Right, a lot of times those buffers could be steeper areas draining down with the water hard of RP.
You could reduce this a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to see everything.
But 10%, I mean, that's barely, that's getting on to being steep for a roadway, but for a suburban driveway, not for...
Not for around here, I think, in the park or brush. About 18.
Well, how much would it change what can be done and not done if we didn't just use 15 as a way of consistency with other stuff? I don't know how much, I don't know where all 15s and 20s are inside of what it is.
Not a lot. The 20% is 5 feet and 25 feet. A handicap ramp is 2 feet and 24 feet. So it's twice as steep as a handicap ramp, which the handicap ramp view is the 112.
All right, 20%. 20% to the state usually makes it still a meeting, right?
Well, that's what they have for this, yes. This, again, this was their language, so, yeah.
Kenny, would you ask Mike Morse, I'm sure he's had some of these come across the desk. What was the rationale when they developed the language of, of in B, undeveloped? I'd like to hear some.
Well, they're thinking too that it's a 10 acre wetland.
Right.
North forested, so they're looking at a, a true wetland area that is undeveloped. So they were trying to, without having a taking of the property, allow people to have a reasonable use of their property by being able to get a dwelling unit in there on the, in the resource protection if there's no alternative.
Yeah, so the people who were looking at now, where you have a house there, they have a reasonable use.
Correct.
Going already, so that's kind of why they're not included in this.
Goes back to that notion of the size of RP, because in, in this document, obviously, they would be.
Correct.
Maybe we could do something where if they already have a house in RP and they wanna put an accessory structure and they're under the 1500, maybe they could stay, you know, if they can conform to the 1500, then that would be pretty good.
Yeah, we're just, that's right. That's why we're gonna say, well, give them a conditional use so we can look at one property at a time.
Right, well, I mean, somebody has a house there, already has a good use of the property, they don't need another building. But I'm saying if, if they weren't already over that 1500, they could come up to that 1500 with their accessory structure and that, that would fit within this, the parameters that are here.
Right.
That are, that, you know, go in undeveloped.
They, they may feel they want the barn or whatever behind their house, and you may say, no, it's better to have it as far farther away from that resource that's reasonable in the board's opinion, and you just relocate it. Work with them, case by case, each lot's gonna be different, each situation's gonna be different, each criteria would be, and each condition would be.
The 1500 square feet refers to additional...
It refers to the dwelling, and it includes overhangs. So if you've got 2 foot overhangs around your house, that is where they draw the, that's where they start the...
But this is for proposed, this is for proposed.
For a proposed dwelling.
Existing, this is for anything that's proposed.
Yes, this whole thing deals with undeveloped lots and just, just residential structures, not accessory buildings. We've thrown the, Kenny threw that in on his own. That's accessory building up in the first.
Original, from the state.
That's not part of it. And that's why the undeveloped is throwing a monkey wrench in it, because that's the state's wording. But if we allow accessory, then somehow we have to deal with undeveloped. And the 1500 square feet, that's the max that this footprint can be, and the footprint includes all overhangs.
Existing structures.
And proposed.
And proposed. So, yeah. And that itself could maybe limit. It, yes, if they have a decent sized house, they may not be able to put up a garage because it would be way past the 1500 square foot max if we leave that in there. And that's the state's max, so I think that's what we would do. So, in and of itself, it may narrow down people coming in, looking, if they have a home already and they want an accessory building. When they realize that they only have a total of 1500 square feet in this RP, then, uh, you know, they may say, hey, wait a minute, I can't build a garage. I don't have enough, you know, it would put me way over the limit. So...
So if we take out the undeveloped, then that means that someone with a harsh woab, with, that just wants an accessory building, can still use that same additional 1500 square feet?
So, this is a one.
No, it's.
It would be inclusive of their existing building.
Yes.
If they have room left.
Right. They can only cover 1500 square feet of the RP. Whether it's their home, garage, or whatever.
So the existing square footage of home subtracting 1500, the balance they could throw into.
So if their house is already 40 by 40, they can't do any more?
No, they can't do anything else.
Kenny, accessory structure is on... There's a couple of numbers here.
There was one spot they counted, but they didn't have them all through it.
In, in four, in the green book, which reads the same as D in your handout. They do say of all principal and accessory structures.
Yeah, so that would be a pre-existing, he had the house and all this other stuff. And the resource protection came over on top of them, but...
Yeah.
But then they call it undeveloped at the top, so that was, that was a little confusing there. But just to clarify.
Well, no, no, no.
They weren't taking rooms lots into consideration that were covered over.
Yeah.
When they, when they drafted this.
No, I think we're, no, what D is referring to, it's why the, the conditions you have to meet, you've got to meet each one of these conditions, A, B, C, D, and E, to be able to even approach code enforcement for a permit or, or us for a, a conditional use. And D just says, whatever you propose, you can only have 1500 square feet. Your house, your garage, your barn, whatever you come to us with, it can only be 1500 square feet. That's what that means. So, that's fine with their definition up here, up top, when they say undeveloped. Because this is one of the criteria. I can't come to you with 1800 square feet of buildings, all right? I can only come to you with 1500, including the two family resource protection.
So if...
What if you have some buildings and you're allowed that aren't in RP?
So if you had room in the outside of the resource protection for those buildings, more than likely you got room for another one and you wouldn't come to the board if for, if you had a reasonable alternative.
Yeah, right. They would always come to you first, and if there's a reasonable alternative, you would find that right off.
Yeah, yeah. So back on the Saunders Land, the subdivision we did there, there's the house that's there with, um...
Uh, Saunders Land, where's that again?
That's the subdivision off the Foxes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so there's the house and stuff right there. They've got a little tiny spot out front by the road, minus some road setbacks, really, I don't know. But once you looked at average size, you know, full dorm and cave, um... You know, there's 800, 900, 10, there's 1100, they'd be teetering around 400 square feet of a barn to put on. That isn't taking overhangs into consideration or anything, but...
Ooh, and there's a roof.
32 plus 120.
You can't even put a solar window or anything. Self facing windows have to have overhangs of like 14.
1062.
Sorry.
438, 438 square feet would be, they're even maxed out if you cut those overhangs off his house. Get on the, yeah, he does get some little overhangs there.
Oh, they're gonna have porch. Oh!
That was capitalated, yeah. No overhang on this one, but this mall.
Yeah, that's such a bad.
Wouldn't it be like half and half in that the little corners will have?
Oh, you mean on the property?
Yeah, like so that's not all of it is a market.
If you felt that, um...
Well, we would still have to meet setbacks, correct? Okay, so we couldn't, we couldn't give them a break in setbacks to keep it out of the RP?
They've got about 1000 square feet on their lot that is out of the setback area.
Tons, because he can only build 400 square feet of what they have. He can have those big five horned layhorn chickens.
Well, he can build, if it's out of the RP here, he can build more than 400 feet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they may feel that, uh...
But it may be too far from the house.
I was just gonna say, they may feel that that's not what they want or whatever, and that would be their option to come talk to you, but that would be the first thing you'd look at is what's reasonable. So that little spot was right there.
And we can be very unreasonable.
Yeah. Technically, I think that's...
Sorry?
That's for the driveways, I think, on that one.
Oh, well, he could tear it up, put his chicken coop there.
They'd move the driveway into the resource protection.
Fine with me, as long as it's not asphalt.
Do you want to, or have you kind of rolled around this notion of the elevation minimally being 1 foot above 100 year floodplain?
That's a requirement anyways.
Right. Is it, is it stringent enough?
Yeah.
The house won't support that ground, would it?
Nope.
We, we've got homes there that are sitting like 8 feet up in the air. Just to be, just to be a foot out of the flood zone for the living space and the type of...
It gets confusing because, sure, that zoning law allows you to raise it normal to 3 feet. And when FEMA's telling you, you need to be 4 feet out, then...
Well, we don't pay attention to that.
They do the flood elevation certificate, FEMA insurance, though.
Yeah, but they're so, those flood maps are so screwed up.
But we got brand new ones.
Yeah, well, they're no better.
Are we on a timeline for this? Does, is this, you want this to hit the floor on June or what?
If we're gonna move forward with it, you have this guidance, uh...
Well, we've got something already written up that's, you know, the proposed changes we've come across tonight or the things we've discussed, there's only been a few of them, which could be ironed out.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just asking.
Yeah, it's something we probably wanna have done by January. What's the, you know, throw in a public hearing somewhere if we get something that we're happy with. Or the majority of us are happy with it.
Yeah.
The free thinkers are happy with it.
Is that the last part of E? Their last sentence, determining the greatest practical extent. Does that limit what the planning board considers?
That's what we call best possible mitigation.
Yeah, that's what we, that's the criteria we've been using.
Are you thinking, but not limited to these conditions?
The house was in, burnt down or...
Ooh, I got one for you. Tributary stream, Ken, is that, what's the, what's the definition of tributary stream? Is that first order or second order stream? Just, I'm just raising this point because, because I'm raising this point.
Sure, but I think it's what you come into one.
You're so, you're the same first rule.
Tributary stream, page 28. A channel between defined banks created by the action of surface water, which is characterized by the lack of terrestrial vegetation or by the presence of bed, devoid of topsoil containing waterborne deposits or exposed soil, parent material or bedrock, and which is connected hydrologically with other water bodies. This term does not include rills or gullies forming because of accelerated erosion in disturbed soils where the natural vegetation cover has been removed by human activity. This definition does not include the term stream as defined elsewhere in this ordinance. You know, it only applies to portions of the tributary stream located within shoreline zone of the receiving water body or wetland. So what the hell does that mean?
Basically, you can tell it's, uh, it's eroded.
Yes.
There's gravel on.
If it's dry, you know that it's a tributary stream because it's, nothing's growing, so it's gonna be wet, yeah. It probably has water in it more often than not, and it connects.
Yeah, I think a tributary stream would run here around, yeah. Otherwise it would be a corineal stream.
But what I'm, what I'm pointing out is, the, the definition would lead you to believe it's a lower order stream, but the usage of the term in E would lead you to believe it's at least a first order stream. Because there's a calling for a setback. Because there's a calling for a setback. That might be, wanted to be home to either first or second order. You know what I'd like to see about that? Because I don't think tributary stream works there. That could be like the color of the sign poppers. The planchets or the one that runs my chickens.
Well, yeah, but that's what, pretty much always though, and it's flowing. I mean, even during the summer, there's water that leaks out of those two upper ponds.
Well, these stuff, these streams that run year-round, that's part of you to consider first order stream. They still run year-round.
Well, that's something that may be warranted.
What's the, how do you do, what's the difference, how do you define secondary, first order?
The two come together, they create a second.
Okay.
And each one of them, I mean, I would think of the same as a tributary, because they're joining up. So first order is one of those two.
Right.
Once they come together, it's a second order stream.
But a first order can still, doesn't have to meet up with something else, it can just go into a-
It can go directly into a lake. Yeah, there's quite a few examples of that in the town.
So is there, is there a greater setback for a secondary?
Yes, yeah.
Second order, I think it's 75 feet, is it, Ken?
Well, that's what we're saying right here, is 70.
Well, yeah.
That's why we want to define tributary a little bit clearer.
Tributary is a little, is a smaller stream even than a first order.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys would go nuts.
Well, no. Well, it says you have to be at least 75 feet back from any of these above-mentioned things, including a tributary stream. So what's the final?
It's unclear exactly what tributary stream is in this case. When you look at the map and people's properties, is it a tributary stream or not? But if we want the first order, second order, those are defined-
It's more concise.
Defined, yeah, I guess, eliminated on the map.
So you would be changing it to that?
So I would think we'd want to use first order, right?
Well, there's been a fight on that, but I would love to use first order, but-
Well, what's the definition of, how's the first order different from a second, other than it runs into-
Currently, the definition of stream starts with a second order stream. And it reads, "A free-flowing body of water from the outlet of a great pond or the confluence of two perennial streams." A single perennial stream up from the fork would be a first order stream.
Right, okay.
So I've been, um... wishing that there be some consideration for protection of first order streams. And this might be a place, that would be a wonderful compromise, to plug it in. And it would, it would take a keystroke at Southern Main Regional Planning to do that. It was set up. So all you'd have to say in E was, would be, "No high waterline of water body, first order stream or upland edge of a wetland." Thereby giving first order streams the same protection that you'd give currently by statute, second order stream.
Does a first order stream have an eroded bed?
Oh, yeah.
So it's a tributary?
We did an exercise-
Why is this a problem?
We did an exercise in the zoning implementation committee. We each had a neighborhood and to try and get a sense of the magnitude of a first order stream. The numbers of little things that we thought about in our own little intimate landscape. Nine times out of 10 were not first order streams, they do not have the- To be a first order stream, it has to be on a USGS map. That's one of the definitions. And they, they, nine times out of 10, I would say, they always, they have year-round flow. The ones that dry up generally and are, don't reach the threshold of a first order stream. So they warrant some of that. Well, like that one that goes by Collinsupstate, that's on first order stream. That one's-
Does it have an eroded bed?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure it's a stream, Jim.
Then I'd call it a tributary stream. I'd demand a 75-foot setback.
Well, all streams have an eroded bed.
Ah! Well then, then what's the problem? I don't, I don't see why, I don't see why-
The tributary stream is a very low threshold, Chip. I'm just trying to-
There's a definition right here. You read the definition, you know exactly what to look for.
Yeah, but the tributary, what I'm saying is, the tributary stream even, even, um... does not warrant maybe all the time a 75-foot setback. If there's some consideration given to not polluting the water, I don't see the warrants. It doesn't come up to the threshold of the flowage of water that warrants that kind of protection. I don't know how else to say it.
So you're looking to make something a little bit easier now? The way I'm looking at it, anything with an eroded bed, whether it's got water in it right now, or it's dry, I'm calling it a tributary stream, and I'm setting 75-foot setback. You're saying you want to see water flowing all the time.
No, I just want a concise definition of the stream. And the terminology of first order, second order, second order is much more commonly used, and is used in a-
Are all first order streams enacted on that map?
They're on that map there.
And if it's not on that map, then it's not a first order stream.
Correct.
And if I find one, it doesn't make any difference.
Let me show you, let me show you.
I can see it from here.
Well-
More or less.
This is an exercise that Gavin and I have been working on a little bit to bolster this thing. Because we were trying to get the sense of how many first order streams flowed unimpeded into great ponds. You know, they would, you consider them as veins or otter.
Right, right.
This would be an otter. And that, those kinds of case studies were what bolstered the notion that they warrant some protection. A 75-foot buffer.
Right.
I'm trying to think of one that's very clear for you here. Do you have any glasses on?
I don't need them for this.
Okay.
It's all real. Is that swine?
That's the little, that might be your-
Or is that a horn?
It's up the road from Moose Pond.
It's Fuzzy's Pond.
Yeah, it's the road across, it's the pond across the street from Fuzzy. But it's a good example of first order and second order. See, these two are first order, this is a second order.
Right, right, right. But still, this gets a 75-foot setback.
Not currently, no.
It does, if it has an eroded bed, it's good for my definition.
Alright, alright. But let me just show you what Jamin did here. It's not, actually, it's on one of the two. She has, from on the stream map, she has from here down, it's got a 75-foot buffer.
Right.
But what I would be proposing is, that within this bit of work, we stretch that buffer up to the first order stream. And you put it here, you put it here-
See, I already would have done that, though. And, and is that going to create a problem?
No.
Well, I'm asking you, not you, Jim.
You're a gentleman and a scholar, and it's about time you saw the light of a tributary stream.
I have! As far as I'm concerned, they're all tributary streams. They would all deem a 75-foot setback. But apparently, the rest, you and code enforcement don't think so, so if we-
It's not an accurate term.
We had it about it in the past, right, and even the selectmen got in on it, and that-
Well, that was first order, second order.
Yeah, that's first order, second order.
Tributary is tied to definition, which is basically bringing forth first order.
And that's what I thought. That's been my whole point all along.
Yeah.
So it's-
The terminology, wait, you're saying the terminology of tributary stream would include a first order stream?
Yes! Jesus, I haven't seen it for an hour! Read the damn definition!
Fifteen minutes.
It's right here! That's been my whole point! This is why I can't understand.
Well, I just think-
I already consider it 75-foot, and everything on that map that's got a blue squiggly, 75-foot setback.
Very, I think that's too stringent.
That's what I was asking you a while ago! Are you making something easier?
Chip, because you are a kid, and I can't talk, but it is that a challenge.
That's what we strive for. Unfortunately, those people watching don't like that.
The board, they take show hands to allow Cal to speak if he would be interested in speaking. You can speak.
Yeah.
It's just a more accurate term, first order, second order. Everybody knows what it is.
Well, I would say they don't.
I think all tips pointing out is that first and second are both tributaries. So if we just say tributary-
Which is what it does.
This language is a little bit vague.
Anybody trying to-
First order, first book, so-
Well, it's typically-
We have one, I don't know what the state-
I know we have one, but the state-
Yeah, we might, it might be in this court, or it might not. I think-
Where this gets muddy is the last sentence.
This definition is not included?
Yeah.
The term stream, who cares? That just makes it, it's defined by the banks created by the action of surface water. It has an eroded bed, and that's the easiest thing for people to see. If you tell them it's a category one or category two, they don't know what the hell that is. But they do know an eroded stream bed. Whether you call it a stream, or a creek, or a whatever.
Well, maybe to be continued, I guess. I think for more concise-
I think, I think you're just, I think you're making it worse for yourself. I said it well enough alone, it includes everything.
Well-
And we could say it was the state, it would make this muddier for you.
The last sentence does not, rips that apart. It greatly diminishes what, the sense that first order and second order-
Oh, because it only pertains to the string within shoreline, is that it?
And it doesn't even include the term stream, as defined elsewhere in this ordinance. I mean, how, that's what we're trying to do.
How does the state define it?
I don't know yet.
How's the state define stream?
No, tributary, tributary is pretty old.
Probably the same way, yes, I would say.
Sometimes you beat. Well, now, see, this says, because a stream in our definition is a free-flowing body of water from the outlet of a great pond or the confluence of two perennial streams.
Which is our definition currently.
That's just a stream, but a tributary stream, which is what we have a definition for, and that's what they say, they don't say stream in here, they say tributary stream. And tributary stream has the eroded bed, and has defined banks, big enough.
But it would not cover you if you wanted to protect first order and even second order streams, because I read this.
Then drop the last sentence.
Yeah, can we change the definition?
That's fine with me.
We can take that tributary altogether.
Or take the last sentence, the one they have a problem with.
Or just omit the word tributary.
No, because I would take it out of this.
You would insert, omit the tributary stream and insert first order stream. Done. I'm not gonna do it this anymore.
No, that's no good. Forget about that. They were tributary stream, take the last, take the last sentence out of the definition of page 28, and then we're all set. And everything with the blue line up there, it's a 75-foot setback. And they don't have to worry about whether it's a first order to it, or a second order to it, and what happened.
Well, by doing that, you're losing the protection of 75 feet on your first order streams.
No, we're not. Because they're tributary. Only if they have a defined bed. Which, yeah, which they, if it doesn't have a defined bed, then it's not even a first order.
Oh, you, wait a minute, are you including the notion of crossing out this last sentence in tributary stream?
Yeah, that's what you have a problem with.
I don't think Mike would like it.
I don't care what Mike likes.
I don't think Kenny would like it.
Mike, he likes it. The definition is the same as the state, the trib scene.
Is it?
Yeah.
With that last sentence?
Yep.
You, you, I think you're bringing confusion where there need not be confusion.
I don't get that at all.
Well, if you want to protect-
I'm not, you're adding something, you're adding, you know-
No, no.
Yes, you are. And I'm just saying, it says tributary stream here, that's what a tributary stream is.
I'm voting for the protection of first order streams, and the way to accomplish that concisely is to eliminate the word in E of tributary stream, and include in its place first order stream. Very easily done, concise.
What's our definition for first order? We will include one, and we'll leave one for second order. So let's get, let's, I want to see what those are first, before I sign on to this frickin' mishmash.
You just learned what they were tonight.
I knew what a tributary stream was, though.
Walk around tomorrow and look at some stream.
I don't need to. I'm not good. It's too cold out.
They're gonna freeze tonight, ain't they?
They're already froze. Anyway, so by next minute, guess the definition for first and second orders. And we're not meeting the first in January, because it is the first, so we've just got the third, unless... Well, then we're pushing up against it, unless we want to have a special meeting.
Kenny, can you help us with refine the notion of the application of the 1,500 square feet in the presence of an existing building on the lot? If we're gonna, if we're gonna strike undeveloped in B?
Yeah, I've got that for note to check with DEP, if we're not gonna do some in the shoreline zone, out of the shoreline language. So it'd be easy to keep it all the same verbiage, but if it's in the shoreline zone, it's obviously something more you guys would consider when there's a proposed application.
What about, what about the option of not making this applicable to resource protection in shoreline zone? And at the same time, striking the word undeveloped, thereby permitting your sheds and chicken coops and garages in regions outside of the shoreline zone, and yet you're maintaining a high level of protection of RG in the shoreline zone?
We should not let them build in the RP, and that was part of the point, the RP and/or the buffer.
Yeah, but if you, you're, the shoreline zone still has the 30% expansion. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned. The shoreline zone has been bought and sold, and where we have to do due diligence.
That's a glitch in the ordinance. The 30% is anything constructed before 1989. So again, if we go back out to Saunders Lane, they were built in 2005. So we've got an issue with 30% out there, too, but that's another-
30% should only apply to shoreline zone.
They're outside of the shoreline, but it's in resource protection. We don't have a clarity of in and out.
Well, we could create that.
Exactly, that's another area.
In the resource, it would be in the title applying. May approve a permit in the resource protection district outside of the shoreline zone.
So inside the shoreline zone, undeveloped, developed units only?
No change.
You're saying nothing?
No change. Yeah, if they're in RP and they're in the shoreline zone, we have enough problems with maintaining water quality in our great ponds without expanding uses. In an RP in the shoreline zone, that's, to me-
Are we calling the buffers, is that called RP?
Yes.
That's really the problem.
That's, yeah, that's what the problem is. That's why they're, that's why they're having an issue, because we made new RP and new buffers, and now they can't use their property. If you say, "Don't touch that," then we're done. If you say, don't touch that, then we're done. We don't change anything.
We haven't seen one project tonight in the, in the shoreline zone, in the RP in the shoreline zone, am I correct? Have all been outside.
Right.
So it's the local, the local resource protection, you call it.
The, the buffers that we created below the state threshold are the ones that are causing contention.
So.
So if this was. There are buffers threshold.
So if this was resource protection outside of the shoreline zone, then the DEP doesn't care about any verbiage we have. They only care about the resource protection in the shoreline, it's a local RP. So we could do anything we want with that.
And it's not, it's not the state that's the issue, it's our that is that the issue.
Correct.
It's the new RP and the buffer.
Outside the shoreline.
Outside the shoreline. And if we don't address that, then there's no point messing with this. And, and I thought that's what you were saying.
No, I was suggesting, Ken, that we leave all the conditions that apply to RP in the shoreline zone around our great ponds, we leave unchanged by, by any of this.
We weren't going to, we weren't gonna change in shoreline. We were only gonna change, I thought, we were only looking at the RP and the buffers outside of shoreline.
I didn't, I didn't have the verbiage broken out that way. But.
But the state is talking about shoreline, and we can't, we can't let them do any more in shoreline. We can only deal with outside of shoreline, correct?
The special exception from the state would be allowed in shoreline. They do allow a dwelling unit through conditional use in shoreline. But really, it's the outside of shoreline that's become more of a problem.
That's what the problem is, yeah, that's, yeah, alright.
That's what I thought we were being worked at as an adult, man.
Chip, what I'm saying to clarify that, in, in this consideration here, in, in line three, it would say, may approve a permit for a single family resource structure and accessory structures in the resource protection district outside of the shoreline zone.
Gotcha.
Or however Ken wants to refine this.
I was trying to tweak the ordinance without getting into redoing the maps and all that stuff. And, you know, when you come across some resource protection, it's a little more difficult to figure out why is it resource protection? Was it state resource protection, or?
It's continuous to the great ponds, that's, that's the trigger that.
Or 10 acres of open water.
Yeah.
Yeah. Such as stream.
Those on, like, that example you have up on the board.
This one here.
There's no shoreline in there, that's all RP.
Yeah.
So it would be easy to, to parse that out by just saying, including the clause in that second line, resource protection district in, outside of the shoreline.
Yeah, so this one here across the street from it, the brown or orange color, is shoreline zoning. So this would be resource protection in the shoreline zone right there. Do the soils or whatever, it's a little bigger on the back, but all this is outside the shoreline zone.
What is that, morning woman?
Hanson, I believe.
Yeah, Hanson is a great pond, so that would be RP in the shoreline, right?
This area all would be resource protected shoreline zone, but we'd have this that was probably added locally over here.
No, that's by state statute, if it's, if it's, what do you call it?
Continuous to the great pond.
Yeah, yeah, like the.
They're considered one unit if they're fully adjacent. As I said, that's what would probably be a little bit fuzzy as far as trying to figure it out if, if it's not clear enough on the map just to look.
There's a good example on Square Pond. Look at Square Pond, where the boat launch is.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that one.
On that whole swamp is RP in the shoreline because of its proximity.
Right, it's within 250 feet of the lake, and it's.
Well, it's, it's.
That makes it shoreline.
But it's, it's hydrologically, hydrogeologically connected to the flowage of the Square Pond.
Yes, yes.
Coming out of there. I think they care coming out, not going in.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, which I don't understand, but.
We can, we can.
Is that coming out? Or is it coming in?
No, that's, well, no.
That's right.
That one is in, I think the rest of this, this all flows this way though, right? No, this does go north. Yeah, that one's backwards.
See, I thought our main problem was the brown areas that we had set up, the buffers.
The local.
And the new RP, the local stuff, that's what I thought was the issue.
That's good. It is, so we just have to parse that out.
Do these, the pond right out here flows. That little pond down the park, that, that ends up going to there. Yeah, these come down through and go up towards H Road and to that pond up there. So as we get two first orders going to one and create, and I believe that stream is all just locally protected. So the state RP hasn't been a problem, because it's been RP for 20, 25, 30 years, whatever, so it's already, the development is already done. And people are well aware of what they own, it's just the newer local outside of the shoreline zone.
Which I thought was mostly the brown.
Are we on the same page then? The title, the banner there might be in the resource protection district outside of the shoreline zone, or excluding. Just outside is the best term.
I like outside.
Yeah, then I think that's right.
Look in the map, you can see what's outside.
So the very first sentence then, special exceptions, the town board may approve, blah, permit for a single in the resource protection district outside. The shoreline zone provided the applicant, blah, blah, blah. Is that what you're suggesting then?
Yeah. And then Ken is gonna help us refine the notion of if this is existing, if we're gonna stick with, or we're gonna change the state language of undeveloped in consideration of our own situation here, where we're dealing with smaller, less than 10 acre RP's, and we want to give the applicant the ability to utilize this lot in the fairest manner with some regard to the resources.
So the land trust, like, is undeveloped and?
Yes. And then we're gonna have the proviso that total building on, on that lot and the consideration in RP and out of RP could only be an accessible 1,500 square feet, is that right?
That's what Ken was saying, I was just guessing, basically.
What was the, outside?
Outside of that?
Oh, no, excuse.
Was it the total, right?
The total.
We'll go to the inside RP, if we don't want 1,500.
In the RP, right. But if we take into consideration existing structures that are in RP or subtracted from the 1,500, balance can be utilized.
So stick with the 1,500, because now locally, we don't have to go by any of the state guidelines. I'd like to get rid of the overhangs.
Really?
Yeah.
Why?
It's pending, it's pending.
Oh geez, alright, so you're just giving them more, okay, fine. Take a footprint, file it, yeah, I'm clear.
I can understand Ken leaving the decks and things like that, the ground footprint, but.
Yeah, and some overhangs are essential to the function we have to hold.
Alright, what? Just build a giant hole in the ground. Alright, including, alright, the ground floor area. Alright, so just cross out then, including Ken leaving it or similar overhang extensions?
Sure.
So total ground floor area of all principal and accessory structures is limited to a max of 1,500 square feet, alright?
In the resource protection.
Yes, but I, I thought we've already established. See, that's established in the, in the special.
First sentence.
In the first sentence.
I, I think he's getting at, you know, they got 1,500 in the RP and they got 300 out of the RP.
Gotcha, alright, I see, I see. Oh yeah, I'm sure.
So the garage.
Backing it up.
The big garage outside of the RP would.
Okay, alright, fine.
And. Did you say 15,000 or 1,500?
15,000!
Ken, can you help, if you're gonna call, you still have to call, like, or you won't?
No, we're just dealing locally now, I mean, I can get guidance for.
Can you help, because they're wanting to come from Mike. The first order, definition of first and second order.
I don't know if they have any, they stick with the tributary, because it's easier to pick up. And, and they only care with theirs inside the shoreline zone. So when that stream, that, that trib stream is outside of the shoreline zone, they don't care.
Alright, then I'll, I'll, you wanna call something together there?
Peter, do you, should we stick a date in there so it's?
I would open the book up for that.
I thought it was, something was thrown around September.
Well, I, I just picked out from the zoning map and sent the code in.
September 20, 2011?
I know, yeah. So it's like a special town meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it was, was it not ready at the town meeting, was that it? Something, there was some hinky thing, something wasn't ready or something.
The building got thrown out by the state and brought it in.
Was that it? Oh.
I think September. Oh, no, that was the February, that was the February 7th, 2011.
I don't know.
I think they modified it.
I, I thought there was some issue with the maps, we drew them up before they were officially approved, or.
The only thing I remember about the maps was the first, second, was the stream thing. And, yeah, that we had to have that corrected, because the selectmen overrode
Oh, I think you're right.
The original intent.
Yes, yes, yes. Alright. So how's that last, how's E look, is that fine?
What is, what is a water dependent structure?
Boat house?
Dog? Boat house?
Boat house.
Thank you all.
We're just getting to the high point of the fight. See ya, Colin. Um, yeah, something that you would need water for.
Arena.
Oh yeah, there you go, we need more of those.
December 11th is when you sign the maps.
Yeah.
Do you think the selectmen will support these changes?
I think so.
Sure, I, I, I don't think, I don't see us make it any worse, really.
I, I would hope that they would speak on behalf.
So E's alright?
Yeah, I guess except for the city mission, tributary.
I want to see a good definition for, for one and two.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright? So. Alright, so what's their deal with, whether they want ordinances and all that?
Soon around the end.
Yeah, yeah, but.
January, something, something.
Well, if we, if we have a meeting the 3rd Thursday and get it all finalized and approved, we'd have a public hearing sometime in the first part of February. And providing there's no thing, you know, no glaring error that we have to change. You know, we could go to the selectmen, you know, the middle of February, that could be good enough.
But you can't believe, you can't believe this one.
We do.
May 18th.
You have, you have.
18th.
No, 18th.
Yeah, it's a week.
You have December 18th.
Two weeks out.
It's today.
That's when you get your Christmas bonus.
Uh, yeah, well, let's see if we can iron it out in the next meeting, let's get our definitions teed up, alright?
May I have permission? Let me, let me.
No, you cannot spend any more money.
Let me.
No expenses.
The other day.
I'm sorry, five bucks last time.
They found themselves in Southern Maine Regional Planning's office because we had a, we had a land trust meeting to conduct up there. And they let us use their conference room sometime, we had to make a call. And I asked the new fellow, Jamie Saltmush's replacement, what was happening with town planning these days, because we haven't seen them for a while. He said, there is some money available to assist towns with, he, he was saying some changes in shoreline zoning. And, and the other day Buck and Steve Buck came by our job site and wanted to get something straightened out about the forestry things.
Yeah.
And he was curious which option that we had gone with there in, in this document.
On the, on the state website, when a, when a logger wants to see. Yeah, we're in option two. Not to be confused with the options in the zoning book.
Right. So he wants to meet with us sometime in January to, to update our compliance with state forestry and see where we are with the state forestry rules. Because he wants to basically carry on the tradition of having himself or someone else be the town forester. He thinks that, and I think we've seen that creates good forest practices in the town, in compliance and with the state guidelines.
What we, what we lost there was the ability to require a forester in a shoreline or timber harvest, resource protection timber harvest. By going with the state standards, we go by the state rules, that was a town rule, so we've lost that ability to require a permit for somebody cutting in shoreline or resource protection and requiring a conditional use for it. If they had a forester, we eliminated the conditional use for it, so we've lost that ability.
How did that happen?
Mark checked off in box number three.
We made it, I thought we made it, it's in the land use chart number nine.
Oh, it's in the zoning ordinance. It's in the zoning ordinance. But why were we checked off on the, on the state website for box number three, which is, it says that that the town is a little more stringent than the state and that they require forestry in those areas? Who, who makes that call? By guidance from the DEP, they told me not to take it wrong, but I'm not qualified to regulate timber harvesting. Because as soon as I had a foresting issue, if we got to court, that'd be the first thing the lawyers would ask me, is what qualifications do you have to be governing timber harvesting? Well, that's why we require forest.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a local ordinance that's different from that, so. Right, well, that's why box number three should have been changed.
Kenny, I'm looking at page 15, number four. I thought we covered that with that provision.
Well, it was for cutting off for protection district, you're supposed to have a forester as well. And we know that's not going on.
In which district?
Aqua for protection, as well as resource protection, they're hoping, if you look in the land use chart, it shows you, that's possible.
Well, if we, if we have it, if we've had it in our ordinance, why does it no longer apply?
Because they don't look in the ordinance, they look at the state website to see what you need to do.
Did they, meaning?
Lawyers.
Lawyers.
When they come, you know, to see if they need a forester.
Right, just what's happening.
Well. If you look on page eight, where the timber harvesting goes to state standards, once the 252 of the 336 municipalities appear, we automatically go to the state guidelines, which just sets the guidelines.
Yeah, it doesn't wash out the proviso enough.
Doesn't wash that out, but by going to option two town, it does. I thought we'd at least still be able to get the notification ahead and be able to do that, but it contradicts with the state. Yeah, look at, look at page 12, which under rural uses, timber harvesting for commercial. On page 12.
Yeah, yeah.
We have recent, the last four.
You have recent, the last four boxes there, it says R four for resource protection shoreline with loss of being offered protection. You look on page fifteen, it tells you what R four means. Says if the applicant has retained a forester to manage all areas to be harvested in the cod, but not just in the shoreline and resource protection, no planning board review shall be required. However, the state's intent to cut form should be submitted to the co-enforcement officer for review, which is something that hasn't been going on either. They've been sending the intent to cut forms up to the state and not, and not giving it to Ken.
What? I thought the state said they had to do that too, no?
But then the state does turn around and send it back to the town when it takes a little while.
Eventually, yeah.
And the code has already been completed at that time, so Ken's not informed that it's going on.
Martin anyway wanted to touch base with you.
Yeah, he was the one who...
The guy at Southern Maine Regional, to cut back to where I started, said there was some state monies available to assist us with some planning issues, uh, before the end of the year. So can I ask permission to, um, inform the chair of, of what the, what the lineaments of that might be? And just get help from them with these definitions of first and second on the stream? I can't just dream that.
Oh, you can too. You dreamed up a whole change to this for current law.
It's gonna cost seventy-five dollars. And it might, it would be state monies.
Doesn't the state have, there must, there's got to be definitions out there. The state's got to have a definition. They use these terms.
He just told us that they don't.
Tributary stream is what they...
They don't, but where do these terms come from if there's no definition? Is that what you made up?
No.
Well, then where's the definition? It's got to be out there somewhere. Google it.
It's called John Rand. It's a hydrogeologic term, you know?
Get it from him. If he'll do it as a Christmas present to us. Come on! Did you burn that bridge?
Can I, no. Can I inform the chair, uh, to the fact that it will be nominal cost or no cost and get their help?
No cost sounds great.
The definition. Is that with the board? Uh, may I make a motion that I'd be allowed to do that?
Sure, if they get it back to us by, in two weeks. If we don't get it for the next meeting, they don't get paid.
Not to exceed fifty dollars.
Five dollars. Come on! They're gonna Google it. Don't take a one minute.
I don't like gas money going down there.
Call them up. You got a phone.
Is that, does the board approve of that?
Have we got fifty bucks left for, in time's discretionary slash one?
No, it is not. You will receive a bill. I don't think you will receive a bill.
He spent seventy-five when you weren't here, so fifty's alright.
What did I spend seventy-five on?
Called the lawyer.
I didn't get a dime on that.
Yeah, go ahead. See what they come up with.
The silver house. Mine's a well-simpient.
You had to call a lawyer because of me.
Yes!
Yeah, we showed most of it at your table.
Oh, oh.
Oh! That was the second time. No, we wouldn't. We decided very quickly.
There was no way out of the woods there.
Oh, I should have watched too. Alright, so, uh, the fifth, uh, the next meeting, we're going to try and get this buttoned up. We'll get our definitions.
Right. And is there approval of a land order to Southern Maine Regional?
Case. You can get it on the computer?
He doesn't, he's not.
I don't have a computer.
He's not literate.
So let's just spend fifty bucks. I'll look at it.
Why don't you do it for him?
Okay.
And if he doesn't like it, then he, you go, give us the bill and we'll decide whether we're going to pay you or not. If we like the answer, alright?
There you go.
That's fair enough.
Why, you live, you want to get the state standards for timber harvesting if there's that money for it to clean that area up?
That, that's my concern. I, I don't care about that.
He brought that up. His, I think his name's Jason. Do you, do you know?
Jason's unfamiliar.
New people. And he said he, uh, he could help us with these things at, at no cost. That would state monies to assist the municipalities with these.
Well, I think we're going to try and get that addressed because I'm...
I would think that could be a cost because it's not the same verbiage as the state's verbiage. I can see the state giving money to clean all these ordinance up. And the state's really, really pushing that state guidelines, no local. They don't want any option frees out there.
Too bad. Yeah. I mean, look at, look at, this, the H road has been hit this last year. Holy smokes!
That's why, too.
And if there's no oversight, I mean, you look at the stuff that was just done yesterday along a section of the H road and it is right next, there's one tree left along the H road and then it's all cut and then here's a real frickin' forested wetland. No ifs, ands, or buts. It's always wet. And right up next to it. And that's something that in the past, we always had to look at. And which, another thing that surprised me, all this logging's going on and there's nothing that's totally dry north of town hall, no offense. And we haven't had, we haven't been approached at all. And I was wondering about that and I never could remember because I got early onset. To ask you, how come all this is going on and we're not being involved? Because I know there's some RP that they're making into.
Well, if they had a forester, you would not have known anyways, but...
Yes, but we required.
But you, you didn't know?
Oh, I see. Come on.
You won't see it.
We get the timber harvesting going in, so...
Get the bullet out there, man!
We get the notices. But if there's a conflict in there, it isn't, it isn't enforceable.
Well, I think the state's done us a big disservice. Be my guest.
So what would we do? We would talk to the selectmen and ask them to talk with the state to go back to option three, which is what the zoning dictates?
Yeah, that was my first question with the state. They said no.
What, who said? The state or the selectmen?
State.
So they said we can't? Oh, that's because they don't want more restrictive local.
They don't want multiple regulations out there.
Oh, that's horrible. Well, yeah.
I'll, I'll...
I think it's a disservice.
I'll bring that up briefly with Jason and see what he says and make if...
He may tell us the same thing that we're...
Disagree with the vice or, uh, sometime you could give us.
If it would cost, have them give us a rough idea what it might cost. And if it's even doable. If the state won't, wants to do it, if they still want to prove it, then there's no point.
They have an option there. Why wouldn't they let people use it?
Well, they took it away from us for no good reason.
Still presented right on the website.
Well, that does, they just do that to give you the illusion that you can use it, but they never let you use it, but...
I'm sure there are some, I'm sure there are some towns in the state that are registered.
Why don't you look it up and see, see how many, and see which ones they are.
You've got to be, you know, borough, south borough, galvez, things like that in New York.
Really?
Uh, there's not, there's not a tremendous amount.
Registration, what?
I think it's pretty hand-handed at the state myself. Is that it? We're all set?
Yep.
We're going to button this up at the next meeting?
Did you get that last comment?
Goodnight, Cable Man. No shit.